Tom keeps criticizing the money that was spent. Saying, "Did you read the latest report in The Sun that we've been just wasting money all over the place?"
I read The Sun, it was February 1st, it read this morning.
Yeah, it's come out today.
You guys printed that off, that's the sign that's on the agenda.
Oh, that's the old picture speak a thousand words.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They do.
And I talked to David Caldwell.
Yeah, I think he sent a response that he would do the same thing.
Yes.
The, uh, the, uh, signed polls, that might be a little more than what we had at, at, uh, the other.
Okay, well, the bits of research I've done, eight hundred dollars isn't out of whack.
No.
And I thought when I first saw it, oh, that's a hell of a lot of money for a sign.
Yeah.
But, uh, for customized signs, it's not.
Well, it's more the polls, because, uh, that's, that's pretty pricey.
Yeah.
You know, with just the, the channel polls, you know, and then they mold in.
Well, I think signage is really important, too, if we're gonna raise the value of this community landscape, and from my standpoint, that goes with it.
Absolutely.
And if the WCI are gonna follow suit, that's great.
We've got, uh, just, uh, a little triage program. A lot of my other washing, where I've got a famous, uh, worker, self-mic, I judge. But initially, when, uh, we were thinking, like, you know, what do you want to do?
Yeah, actually, they also, North Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee. Yeah, North Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and even South Carolina. Time of year to be up there.
I think that signage is important, yeah, I do.
The leaves are already turning.
The landscape of the appearance.
Landscaping, it's a sign.
It is. The first landscape architect, well, the only landscape architect that came and addressed the landscape advisory committee. Sorry, who did the Brooks, no, about three oaks. He, his whole thrust on landscaping included signage.
Yeah, they're looking for the big boxes in their.
It's not just something you pop in later.
This week, the rates went up.
I, I get it.
You can tell, it's pretty funny, you have these.
They're starting to.
I've, I've had salmon, I've got green tops. That's a good sign.
Yeah, give it about another month and a half. The vegetarian drive is pretty tired of work.
You've seen your face at the time.
Went to roam Georgia. Saw Berry College. They have. They're written log. The females at the college. The dining hall is in this massive log. Soon that gets started. The kids pay for tuition, pay for tuition by riding big bobcat lawnmowers and coming to the lawn. First we evolve.
That's a great idea.
And I would have loved to go to college.
Hi, Tony.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
I would have loved it though.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's a bit of a dumb.
Story.
Okay, there was four in right. Number one, and his primary reason is they've been irrigated. And, uh, I promise to, uh, have some, in the look of this, maybe. The second issue was the rest is going over. And the other issue was the lake, his lake, which is under twelve, that's a number of ten. And I, and I agree with that, that's a tough question. My questions are the same ones as. There's no law. How can anybody, could you, and I, where can we go?
Cam, Cam.
I sure will.
Something around the sales that have been reported. Apple's sales are reported significantly, and all the other stuff.
Well, I've never felt that they were necessarily to start, uh, an environmentally conscious.
Because it's not our stuff.
Hello.
Does that work?
So the question is, and I've asked them before, I asked how. Uh, we've got a capitalist, we're doing these reports in the house, or do we need this, do any?
This is mine, I'm gonna put this one on the table.
I'd like to know, have we got the response?
Next Monday? Well, I'll take, well, what do you mean, who do they play? We got, we start college. I'm leaving Saturday. Next Saturday.
Are you ready to roll? We have three o'clock. Scott, are you ready?
Oh, it's already on. It's been on for six minutes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
I agree.
It is three P M. on Thursday, September third, two thousand and fifteen. Time for the meeting of Gateway Supervisors Community Development District. Meeting, we have a quorum, please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If you have a noise in making machine such as this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you wish to speak to the board, there are slips in the back by the door to hand to the manager. Mister Manager, uh, do we have folks who would like to talk to the board this afternoon?
Yes, sir, we have Mister Tinkle, who would like to discuss, um, stormwater permits. Issues.
You guys just need to be able to read good writing. Uh, good afternoon, Ed Tinkle, one 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 eight oh Ben Pine Drive. Gonna wear a couple of hats here, uh, today. Uh, the first one, and I've been told to be politically correct, so I've gotta watch how I say this, but, uh, wanna go back two, three years. We, uh, were working on our stormwater ponds and trying to determine who owned these things, or what the status of them were. As I recall, there was a big spreadsheet put together, and we were going to contact both engineers and attorneys, and I believe letters were sent out. Uh, just, uh, without getting into the detail, just asking where are we at on that? On the basis that we've got a lot of work coming up, and I don't think anybody would deny that. We're talking about millions of dollars, uh, gonna be spent on ponds, and I've got residents asking me, why are we spending them when the developer still owns them? Whether we're maintaining them or not, why, why did the developers get off scot-free on things that were not done properly? And, uh, accepted by the board on, on a maintenance, but yet not maybe on a, uh, a transition of the actual documents? And so my question is, is just basically, where are we at on that pond ownership? Uh, did that just fall off the table, or did the developers, are they ignoring us, or what?
Thank you, and, uh, if board members will permit me, I'd like to have either Scott or Danny see if they can, uh, start with an argument for Ed, or, excuse me, an answer for Ed.
I can, for the record, Danny Nelson, Etchedrateg District Engineer. Um, yeah, this dates back a number of years, and, uh, I guess the board knows, we've been working to, if you will, get the low-hanging fruit, um, transferred. And, uh, over the past, I'd say eighteen months, um, I believe somewhere around thirty-five to forty of the, um, permits and lake systems have been, um, transferred over to, uh, the operating phase. It's about thirty-five to forty percent, um, so I'm not sure the exact number, maybe under thirty, but it's thirty-five to forty percent have been transferred. Um, the majority of what is left are a variation of WCI. And that's kinda where the stumbling block was before, and as you know, we went down that road in Pelican Preserve, so I'm not sure, you know, if the board wants to go down, down that road again. We did send letters out to, um, developers and engineers, uh, a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago. Some responded, some didn't. Um, WCI is the majority of what's left, but we do have, um, I think these are homes, Lenar has a couple of the developments. So there are a couple, and, uh, you know, we had sent out letters to them before, had asked, had threatened, um, but I mean, it's, it's at this, you know, board's pleasures to, you know, what you want to do. Otherwise, we'll continue moving on with the process we have been doing.
If I may, for the record, just for Tony Peers, for clarification, again, so we don't confuse in the terminology and the nomenclature. Uh, the focus is on the transfer of the South Florida Water Management District operating permits.
Correct.
These are surface water management or stormwater management systems that we own or have an easements or a fee. We have the systems, we have the facilities, it's a matter, correct me if I'm wrong, Danny or Scott. It's a matter of just transferring the operating permits from, not just, but transferring the operating permits from the original entity to the district as the operating entity.
Yes, but I think, you know, where, where Ed's coming from is.
As opposed to the ownership issue.
Right, as opposed to the ownership, just solely the operational maintenance obligation. Uh, you know, where Ed's coming from is monetary standpoint, is we're moving into this program of, of doing maintenance and repairs. Um, you know, do we have that ability to, uh, you know, to go after developers, engineers or otherwise, and, uh, or has that, has that door been shut?
Yeah, and, and, and as you all know, from the standpoint of old WCI, that whole issue as to any facilities that they constructed, you always bump up against them asserting that they're not doing anything more in those areas, if not for a while, as opposed to what's going on in Pelican Preserve. And then you also have the statute of proposed, statute of limitations issue for lakes that were constructed or water management facilities constructed in the late eighties, early nineties. So you have a number of other issues.
I, I think.
To the extent that there are facilities not constructed according to the plans and specifications.
Yes, and I, in court, in, in terms of, uh, the remaining that, systems that have not been certified, or have been certified but haven't been transferred to the operating phase, like I said, the majority of these are WCI. So, I mean, we could certainly reach out to WCI and ask that they just simply, you know, finish the paperwork. Um, as Gateway has been operating the, these systems for a number of years now, so I mean, we can certainly, that would help us, us out. It doesn't, it doesn't solve the issue that, that Ed's talking about, but again, with specifically WCI, I don't know where we would, you know, what we'd get out of them anyhow, specifically on this issue.
We have some questions for you, Danny, Rod, please.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Ed. Um, okay, just big picture, we've got sixty-nine lakes or ponds in Greater Gateway and thirty-two in Pelican Preserve. They're, would give or take a lake, okay? Um, do we own all of them?
No.
No. No.
No, I'm talking, I'm not talking engineering permits or operating permits.
The land.
I'm talking the ownership of the ponds.
Well, the question is ownership.
Because Tony is distinguishing between ownership and permits, which I.
Ownership of facilities maybe, we may have an easement for the lake or an easement for the pond.
You know, I was talking, for example, Ed, you trans, you, you made some efforts to transfer ownership of the ponds in Gateway Greens to the district.
There's five or six ponds still in Gateway Greens that are either owned by WCI or by the country club or joint.
Okay.
Some are, some aren't.
So the focus really is on the South Florida Water Management, not the engineering permit, which is initially issued, but it's the operating permit subsequent to that.
Correct.
And, and we don't have an operating permit for all of them.
Correct.
Can you, it would help me at least if you could just come up with a list of all a hundred and one lakes and tell me which have and which don't have an operating permit.
Yeah, we could, I could do it as a list, or I could do it as a map that would, might be better.
Whatever these is, very. And there's, assuming, and what, roughly, how many of the hundred and one ponds do not have an operating permit?
Um, I'm gonna break it out into two areas, simply because Pelican Preserve is simple. Zero of Pelican Preserve have been transferred to the operating phase. And that's thirty-something. Of, of what is remaining in Greater Gateway, um, thirty-five to forty percent have been transferred, so that's, uh, over the past year, uh, to the operating phase. And I'd say about ninety percent of the remaining sixty percent are, um, WCI or a variant of WCI as the original permitee. So with one entity, we could, if we got them to work with us on that, we could, we could actually clean that, uh, we could clean that paperwork up at least.
Sixty percent of sixty-nine are still, we still need an operating permit?
Correct.
So that, that's thirty-five, forty ponds.
Correct.
And what about Tony's point about statutes of limitations, or the possibility of going after developers to make good? Do you, do we feel as a district, we, we've got something we can do there, or?
I, you know, I think, um, there, you can certainly send out, you know, another letter.
I'll say that.
There's, there's stuff that Ed might say that I might not wanna, I might not wanna say here, standing at the podium. Um, it, it has some ideas, is what I'll, what I'll say. Um, so, I mean, you can certainly send letters out encouraging people to, to do the, I, we already know where, where we would go with WCI. And that's ninety, again, that's ninety percent of it, we, I think, we went down that road once already.
And what happened?
That was the whole bankruptcy, I mean, we lost.
Oh, I see, okay.
We lost that, and we lost, we'll lose it again.
Just one second. Do you, or the attorney, know whether the, do WCI has the authority to transfer items that belong to the old WCI?
Yes, uh, I, I will say, and, and I don't know if Tony heard that, but.
Yeah, I did.
We had this issue in, um, in Pelican Preserve. Part of why, uh, many of the, the existing ponds in Pel, not, not the newer ponds off of, off of Cypress, but all the, uh, the, um, older ponds, the reason why they haven't been transferred. WCI, uh, made that effort two or three years ago, and this is when we were discovering a lot of the, uh, issues, a lot of the inspections had been done. And, uh, they hired an engineer, um, Q Grady Minor, to go and do a certification for those lakes that had been done and had been in the operating phase. Um, we sent, I sent a letter or an email to the Water Management District expressing our concern, because they were essentially transferring that over to, uh, to Gateway. And we knew there were, there were issues. And, um, so the Water Management District sent WCI a, a letter saying, you have these issues and they've got to be resolved before we will allow you to certify this. That was a couple of years ago. Um, we have our quarterly meetings with the Water Management District, and that's one of the things that I'll always ask, where do we, you know, where do we stand with that? Can you update us, Water Management District? And at the last meeting we had, um, that triggered them to send a, uh, letter out to WCI, asking where they were with that. WCI's response was, well, it's not our responsibility, that was old WCI. And our response back was, well, that's funny, because when the assets were transferred over, those permits were transferred over to new WCI, and you're working off of those new, off those permits, so, you know, is, you can't, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
And that includes prepaid connection fees.
Yes, so, all, all of those, yes, exactly. So, to, to answer your question, those old permits were transferred to WCI, so yes, they, they have that authority. Now, that's Pelican, I don't, I assume they, that all of them throughout Gateway were, were transferred as, as well.
Would you recommend not accepting any more property from WCI until we get that cleared up?
I, no, I would not, I, I actually would recommend, Ed, Ed would probably disagree with this, but.
Eyes in the back of your head.
But, my, my, my reasoning for saying I would go ahead and accept these is because these are the, these are the, these are, majority of these are some of the original lakes in Gateway. They're pushing nearly thirty years old. Um, Gateway's been operating them for a number of years. And again, I go back to the whole, you know, bankruptcy issue, you're not gonna win that, that battle, so I wouldn't spend the, the money. I would personally work with WCI and ask that they, uh, complete the certification process. And the majority of these were, were by a single engineering firm, um, with a few by, by Johnson Engineering, but the more, majority of these were Holmontes. So they could easily work with, you know, with one engineer to get most of these, uh, transferred.
Do you have any more questions?
And just to complete my earlier point, would you, I don't need a map of all the lakes, I know where they are, I've got, you've provided that already, thanks. I'm just looking for a list, one to a hundred and one, I wanna know who owns them, how old they are, and whether they have an operating permit.
The ownership part.
Danny, I think if you recall correctly, you had a map with various easements and all that information was on there originally.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll look to see.
I recall that map.
I've seen, I've seen a, uh, schedule, but I've not seen one that showed ownership.
Yeah, one that had like a multi, and a reference, even various instruments from way back when.
Okay, so if we, we have.
Okay, I need to.
We did, uh, we, we, a couple of years ago, I, I could have, I mean, at the next meeting, I could have.
Summary sheet, that's all, summary sheet, so we can all see who owns them and how old they are, and whether we have a permit. We can't make decisions unless we have that reference.
Yeah, Danny, you did do that. You did do that a couple of years ago.
Yes, that's correct.
There was a spreadsheet, and there were several maps that were prepared, so, yeah, certainly.
Thank you.
Pam, do you have anything else?
Well, we've got the bases going now.
Yeah, that's it.
Gary?
Yeah.
I think that only had fifty-two on it, though.
I'm gonna do a medea on you, Haler. In your statement, though, you made, Ed, for point of clarification, you said, quote, "In folks that you're talking to, trying to justify to them why we're spending the monies." And one of the simplified answers is, is because South Florida Water Management, in spite of WCI, and in spite of their attitude, wants us to take on the obligation to maintain these, that they're not left in limbo, and so we have that obligation to do that.
I don't, I don't think that's totally correct. The issue is, is that we stepped in, this is water over the dam, we stepped in and we started operating lakes, taking over management, when we should not have done it. We stepped in and started operating these things and maintaining them, and those engineers and those contractors had not furnished this board, because I've got a copy of a letter, that Bill Knight refused to sign, from one developer. He refused to sign it on the permit, it was a, I wanna call it a Form ten forty-nine. It's a South Florida Water Management District form that this entity signs to acknowledge they reviewed all the as builts and everything, and they're assured they're ta, taking over the operation of a viable, uh, pond. We took over a bunch without doing that form, a bunch.
You're probably right.
And residents wanna know why.
You can't unring that bell.
You can't unring that bell, Bill, that's true, but the one thing you can do is the people that rung that bell, you can sit down with them at table and let them know how the facts of life really are. One in particular's got a thousand homes to build here yet. And I'm telling you, this could be a political issue at the next election. If they wanna take and hide behind the shield of that, uh, of bankruptcy, let them hide. But if I had anything to do with it, they'd be pushing beans with their nose of getting permits approved until they come in and help us with the costs that we're incurring on ponds that were not built right.
Thank you, Ed, either, board members have any further questions?
Question, and that was probably more to Tony. I know that some of the lakes may have reached a statute of limitations for being built in eighties and nineties, but what about, like, Lenar, for instance, that their communities were built after that? What is the actual statute of limitations?
Well, we're talking basically ten years, ten-year timeframe.
Ten years, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Assuming that it's a latent defect, if it's not a latent defect, something that, then it's a shorter period of time.
The, I'll skip that, just, I think that needs to be looked at.
Arguably.
The, the next one I have is, uh, has to do with aquagenics and, uh, lake maintenance. Uh, we had a Pond Works Group meeting, and representative of aquagenics was in and very, uh, helpful in explaining to the committee just exactly what they are doing here in Gateway. And they made it clear that they are not doing, nor is in their contract, any responsibility for littoral maintenance. Uh, I went out to this after, or this morning, and drove around specifically looking in the FPL easement of ponds one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen, and one fourteen. Four ponds, uh, just four, selected randomly because of the fact that they have a lot of littorals in them. We're doing nothing with them, it's out of hand, out of hand. I would suggest that somebody get aquagenics in here and have them give us a proposal for an amendment to the contract, that if we're gonna start talking about littorals, littoral planning, let's start talking about littoral maintenance. Just to have them come in here, or to have us go and spend all that kind of money to put these things in, and then not maintaining it, I don't, I hate to, I would hate to even think what Gateway and the hell you're gonna hear if the rest of the ponds look like one eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and fourteen. Uh, next item, uh, the ponds group, along with Scott, along with Elle, along with Molly, along with Danny, met, uh, last week. And at your meeting on the seventeenth, we're gonna be delivering an interim report, uh, basically what we're, what we have found so far relative to pond management, and some recommendations for the board, uh, going forward. Some of which, uh, may include going back and revising some of the decisions that you've made in the past, but, uh, we'll wait till that next meeting to do that. Uh, next one is that, uh, we keep talking about, uh, the importance of these, uh, lakes and the ponds and water quality, but I know just in my community, Gateway Greens, uh, and I talked to Scott about it, and I think we're gonna get, start working on it, but it's, it's gonna spend some money. We got catch basins, if you go out and look at these catch basins, they're disgusting. And that's where water quality starts, that water goes from that catch basin straight to the pond, not counting the runoff that goes off the grass. We haven't had a program for cleaning catch basins since, I, I don't think we've ever had one. We do it on a as-needed basis if something comes up, but, uh, I suggested to Scott, and five years ago, I suggested we need a VAC truck, I still say we need a VAC truck, because the work we can use on all our utilities of having that truck would be well-paid for. But we need to be looking at getting these catch basins cleaned. Uh, we already know several in the community that when we have rain, we're ponding up simply because they're full of debris, full of debris. So I, uh, had, encouraged the board to get on, uh, board with that, and back Scott and staff on getting the subcontracts in for catch basins and cleaning. At the same time, we get a water quality benefit out of it. Uh, next item is, uh, wearing my golf course hat. Uh, we patiently sat for three months, waiting on Wetland forty-seven and forty-eight. We are now to the point, from the tees of the sixth hole and the seventh hole at the country club, you cannot see the greens any longer. The salt bush has one. Uh, you can't see, we need to get in and get that salt bush, salt bush in the line of sight trimmed down. Everybody over there is very upset about it. It's so bad on the sixth hole that you, the little guns that we have, laser guns, they won't work, they won't go through the salt bush to even shoot the, the green. So, uh, on behalf of the, uh, club and the members, uh, wish somebody could get in there and get that salt bush, not the whole wetland, but the line of sight from the tees to the, uh, to the green, so we can see it. Uh, and then the last one, uh, Tony was, uh, nice enough that we now have the final document, I believe, that on the villas where we had those easement issues, Tony has prepared a consent, and, Tony, I've never heard this word before, a joiner. A joiner. Uh, that will be signed by all property owners that have a mortgage on their property, so.
Signed by the mortgage holder.
A mortgage holder, signed by the mortgage holder, indicating that they consent to the easement that's being granted on that property that they are, uh, have a mortgage on. So, thank, Tony, thanks for that, and I think we're gonna have a resolution of that issue, and I might have something as the meeting comes up on some of the other topics, but that's it right now.
Thank you very much, Ed, and I mean it, thank you, um, do you, we have a question?
I have a question on the golf course, um, pointed, um, number four, you talked about hole number seven, par three.
Uh, seven, par three, yeah.
You're talking about the, the.
But really, it's four, six, and seven.
Well, four and seven, I remember, have always had issues with, with, with sight, line of sight.
Seven, you can't see anything now.
Right, now, in the past, has that been burnt down, or how has it been treated by the district?
In the past, the district's gone in with aquagenics and cut it, but the issue was, is that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we were gonna have a joint meeting with, uh, my good friend, uh, Marie, the sources. And I guess what we didn't wanna do is to go in and cut it before she got here. Well, there was a problem that came up, and for some reason, we had to defer that meeting from a June meeting to an August meeting, and so consequently, we didn't wanna cut it, so, and you know, in this time of the year, that stuff grows like crazy. And it's only gotten worse, well, here we are now, in September, hopefully, we've had that meeting with Marie to where she'll be gone for another year, and we can go out and get that stuff cut.
Presumably, uh, you wanna get this dealt with, uh, both when all the northerners come back in October.
Yeah, they're gonna be back October one, and I guarantee you, it will be a line behind me come the October meeting, uh, if it's not cut. It's, it's, it's sad.
Okay. I'm getting confused here. Why are we?
I'm getting confused here. Why are we so concerned that Marie has got to be gone before we do what we're supposed to do? Or are we trying to do what we're not supposed to do?
I'm ju, I'm just repeating what I believe to be why we didn't cut it. I don't know if there is a fear that Marie is gonna get upset.
Well, it shouldn't be cut.
I, I don't know why Marie would be upset either, Gary.
Right. I don't want to go down another route, forty-seven and forty-eight again.
Well, we don't want to have another three-year or five-year penalty on us either, of forty-seven and forty-eight.
I don't want to have a fine like we had before.
But the issue is, is that those, those things need to be maintained, and if Marie has a problem, then maybe we need to go another route.
If Marie has a problem, then we have to work through the problem. We are not going to circumnavigate and have a horrific fine like we had the last time. So, the proper way of handling it is through her, coordinated by Elle, because they work together very well, and then we do it properly.
Well, part of the, the problem, as far as timing, is Marie's been transferred to another area, and there's a new enforcement officer that's been assigned, and it's, what, next week, she'll come in?
Danny's got, got some great communication still going with South Florida Water Management that.
But, but you've got a situation where your lakes are, are pretty much developed right now, and I don't understand why aquagenics isn't working with you. This, everything that Ed is just.
This is, this is a wetland.
It's a wetland.
This is a wetland.
This is, this is wetland forty-seven and forty-eight.
Combined wetland where we paid a horrific.
It's right in the middle of the conservation area.
Before. And they're very alert to what we're doing there.
In fact, I believe we just exited the, what was the, what'd you call it, that term we had, we probationary period. I believe we just exited that.
Correct.
And I, I don't know what the fear is of what Elle would say, but to me, that's maintenance and not acknowledging that that golf course has a need. I don't get a problem.
Now that you've made it very public, Ed, I think that it's, it's very necessary that we make sure that we do it correctly. I couldn't agree more. We need some professional help on this.
Yeah.
Cal and Danny and everybody.
I wonder where that Marie was gone, but if Marie is gone, maybe we'll get somebody that's a little.
Maybe we will, but we need some professional help on it, and, and, and pretty darn quick.
Molly can handle it. Yeah, I don't think aquagenics has been the issue. They have not had the instruction, is the point.
We, okay. Don't push Elle out of the, the side here. Elle's our staff person, and she's versus Molly. She's part of us, and she's been directly involved in this before, so I think that she should stay directly involved in it, especially if that's our forecast for one of her very important functions.
She's got the history.
So I think, yeah, and Danny has still got some very definite connections with South Florida Water Management, so I think between the two of them, that can very definitely be worked.
But.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, yeah.
Wait till November.
Mr. Chair, for me, briefly, and I'll wait for Scott, Kel to finish, have a question for Scott.
I, I don't know.
Scott, please.
Just, just a question. Scott, on the aquagenics lake maintenance contract that they have, are they providing the monthly reports to us of silt accumulation? Do you know?
I know we get reports from them on every treatment. I don't know the details of the reports.
Yeah, I'm just wondering maybe to address the issue Ed raised about the catch basins, because that would qualify as silt accumulating control structures in the pipes and grates.
They're supposed to monthly. I'm sure you're, they're not looking at the road inlets.
They are not looking at the road inlets, I can tell you. I think what I was referring to Tony was the bubble up at the lakes.
Okay, it's on.
The head wall.
Okay.
And they do check them.
Okay.
But who, who gets the report, then? And who analyzes the report from our side?
I don't know.
Yeah, we need your help.
Aquagenics, Scott Connell. Aquagenics, every time they do a treatment, we get a report, and it's emailed to us. It's a handwritten report from the field.
Can you read it? And, and I'm saying that in all honesty, because the reports that a different vendor used to do, if you could read their handwriting, then you are capable of reading Gaelic.
Yes.
Okay.
And they're, they're outlined as to what chemicals, what areas, et cetera, et cetera, and, and the description of what was treated, and the conditions, and the quantities, the amounts, the date, the time, the conditions, et cetera. And, but that's for the water surface areas.
Do those coordinate, and are they exactly in line with, I guess it was what Molly went out with Elle and came up with, as far as the same reports on stormwater pond management, like these ones that talk about brown ponds and?
I, I can't answer that.
I think somebody should check that, to see if, I mean, if we were getting two different reports, why aren't we checking the reports to make sure that those reports fit this way instead of this way?
Well, I believe Elle is doing that, and she's addressing that with a contractor. When she and Molly go out and walk it, and then they are with Brian, the branch manager, or the technician from aquagenics.
I think you need to have some conversation with Elle and aquagenics and some other folks, and we get this ironed out. Would you agree?
I agree. We'll do it.
Gary, we'll get this ironed out. Thank you very much. Please, anybody? And again, Ed, I really thank you for bringing this to attention. There are so many things that you've helped us on over the years. Mr. Manager, do we have any other public?
No, sir, just the one.
Just the one. All right, that means we're ready for committee reports, I believe, and the first is Pelican Preserve Advisory, Phil?
Phil, easy, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. You should have had in your book our written report. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The first one relates to the operation and maintenance agreement between WCI and ourselves for the assets. We thought we were gonna have a meeting on the thirty-first of August to resolve this. That meeting didn't occur because of Erika, so we now are back to the, I don't know, they're back to the drawing board, but WCI Council is gonna redraft, try and redraft that, that agreement. So we're, we haven't resolved that one. The other thing I'd like to just reemphasize is our comments on cash management. I think, because I think this applies to your accounts as well. We have a huge amount of cash in account oh two, two million bucks as of June thirtieth, and most of that is sitting in accounts where we're earning point zero one percent. And I think, as I say, I suspect you've got the same, same thing going on.
No. No, we shouldn't have.
We dealt with it.
You dealt with it. Well, we, we foolishly did not deal with it until now, but we are going to deal with it, because it's, you know, we've got a lot of money.
You need to talk to us.
Hmm?
You need to talk to us.
Oh, yeah.
We, we dealt through that. We got, made thirty thousand dollars more because we moved it into money market.
Yeah, well, we're, we're working with Stephen to do that, but it's, it, it's gone on much longer than it should have. It's something that we really should have jumped on a long time ago.
Ed, has the advisory committee told Stephen precisely what they want him to do?
Well, he is working up some recommendations for us as, as to some laddered CDs. What we're trying to do now is get a handle on what all those funds are gonna be used for and when they're gonna have to be used. And that's what we're working on at this point.
That's very important.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got to know, because some of them are clearly near-term, some of them are, are much longer. And so, we're, we are, at our next meeting, we are gonna, we're gonna have, be laying out exactly what we need, so that he can then make further recommendations as to how we invest that money.
Is there anything that this board or our management can do to be helpful?
I think not at this point. If we, if we need some help, we will, we will come back to you.
Thank you.
And anything else? I'll just answer questions.
No, we're good.
All right.
Thank you, Phil. Stony Brook Advisory Committee, is there a person here that wants to bring us up to date on what's going on in Stony Brook?
I thought Joel was gonna be here, but can you, are you gonna make?
Do you have anything you want to say? All right, we'll proceed then, if we may.
I, I do have something to say. Please, Bill.
Please, go ahead.
Page ten of the agenda.
Page what?
Page ten.
Okay.
Point number five.
Got it.
If you read the last sentence of the, of the first paragraph, I wanted to be clear to my colleagues here on the board what I actually said. I was at the Landscape Advisory Committee when there was some discussion about the money that could be allocated to the medians. And my comment at the time was, I believe that that can be funded out of the road turnover budget as a, as a, as an appropriate project, because it is concerned with the road turnover. I actually didn't say there were no constraints regarding the budget, and I think that's important to make clear. And I distinguished that particular part of the Landscape Advisory Committee project as being a land, road turnover issue, as opposed to any future ones, which probably won't be. And I just wanted the committee to realize that, that it would be part of a different budget. I didn't say there would be no constraints.
Do you want to change the minutes?
Do you want to change the wording on it?
Well, I, I didn't put the wordings in. If, if.
No, but.
This is probably, if there was an, if there was an audio report of what, at what was said at this Stony Brook Advisory Committee, and that was said, I can't help that, because I didn't say it.
What I would suggest is that the, the board request that the committee go back and amend the minutes to more accurately reflect the statements, representations made by Supervisor Senior.
Thank you.
Correct. Mr. Manager, do you have that?
Yes.
And you can take care of that?
Uh, yes.
Subject to Rod's review. Say again? Subject to Rod's review.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All. Now, when, may we proceed to the consent agenda? We have a meeting of, of August sixth, the project tracking, two stormwater pond management sites, and a field management maintenance inspection report. Are there any of those items that members would like to pull for discussion before we move the agenda? I want to go through a couple of these pond management things and maintenance inspection things, as I think everybody thought I would. Can we pull C D and E? Would that be satisfactory?
B, please.
B also?
Yep.
Anybody want to pull A? Let's proceed then to B, project tracking. I believe, Mr. Senior, you were the one that wanted that?
Excellent.
Yeah, Scott, may I ask you a question, please, on this?
Can you give us a page number of where you are?
Page twenty-three, please. Page twenty-three, Scott. I think, I think it perhaps needs amending. It looks in the second column like the Board of Supervisors hasn't, hasn't approved any of these. There's got no all the way down there, although some, I understand that some of these projects are in fact approved by the board. For example, the, the fourth one down, irrigation system, high service pumps, it says at the end that the board has approved that. If you've, just, that's just an example. Are we saying that the board hasn't approved any of these, or it just need updating?
Needs updating.
Yes, he does, in comments section, it says it was approved.
Yeah, Bryn, in the second column, it doesn't.
Right, correct.
I'm just asking, would you try and keep it up to date, because I'm, I'm a little confused when I look at that at a glance. It doesn't, it's not right.
Sure.
And the budget amount, not, is not there either. Would, that would help.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, you know, if we're gonna have, put these things in for the board's examination, they've got to be up to date, or they're, they're worse than nothing almost.
That's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, and I also mentioned, I apologize, I didn't mention B, but I'm still, we've got these things, TT slash RWAs, and we've got PMs and SCs and IVs, and I don't know if we're going Roman numerals now, or SC slash IV TT, I, yeah. How is?
Okay, are we referring to that same page on the, on the?
Actually, I'm referring to page twenty-one, I think. The beginning page.
Well. We abbreviate, and it says who the consultant is, and TT is Tetra Tech, and RW.
Can't you put the chart in the beginning or something that gives all these?
We can do that.
A nomenclature would be very helpful.
We can add a legend. This, this, if you remember, this started out being landscape, and, and then it's, we'll make it work. It's difficult. We'll make it work, though.
Thank you very much. Now, um.
Are you, were you finished or not?
Actually, I had one other note that I had put in here, and I'm trying to remember what it was when I read through it. Oh, it's, excuse me. Griffin Drive pathway underneath palm tree relocation underway fifteen, nineteen, Griffin Drive is scheduled for resurfacing beginning August third. Then the next thing says, eight twenty-five, August twenty-fifth, contractor is completing new path on Griffin Drive and rehabilitating the existing one along Griffin Yeti. Doesn't that need to be updated? I mean, obviously, we're not doing Griffin Drive yet.
This was updated about ten days ago, or longer, maybe twelve days ago.
Okay.
To meet the criteria, as a current update to the possible tropical storm and things. Currently, what we have going on is they are scheduled today, hopefully today, this afternoon, and, or tomorrow, to be paving the pathways along Griffin Drive.
I saw they were doing that work, yeah.
Okay, and then, and possibly Saturday, they'll be working. They're working during the week between the hours of nine and three to avoid any traffic tie-ups with Gateway Elementary School. And then, the next week, they'll be getting the, the work on Griffin Drive, the roadway, and in that, there'll be lane closures. They'll be working one lane at a time for the next week and a half to two weeks. They'll be working again Saturday to get that road rebuilt around that S curve and repaved. So, there'll be full force out there for the next couple of weeks getting that done.
This next one was for Yvonne. It talks about the generator at the master pump stations.
Yes, sir.
And the last time that they're.
Wait, 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 please, can you give us a page?
Sure, I'll be right with you. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
Generator, it's the second item down. It's generator at master pump stations, and the last input was the seventh of May.
Yeah.
It says that you're working on deciding where they're supposed to go, but I would have thought that that would have been.
Well, the first generator that we are going to put is in the Gerskow Pump Station. I have a proposal. It's thirty-nine thousand, almost forty thousand dollar, plus the cost of installation and so on, plus this lab. The point I have been done there is to determine if we have room. We finished the rehab of the pump station. Now we have to do the, the rest of the legwork. We have to remove a lot of landscaping down there. There is a sign. There is a lot of electrical wires, cables in there, and telephone wires and so on, and we are having difficulties on finding a proper location for the generator. The generator is a four, sixty KW. It's a rather large, has to be set in a concrete pad. I'm afraid that we may have some problem trying to put it on there. We need it on there. We may have to get an easement from the church or something like that.
Well, that was what I was gonna kind of ask, what, what was holding it up, and then as you started to discuss, my head started turning towards Tony, towards the thought of, so what if? Do we need to get an easement zone? Have we even started any kind of communications with the church to find out what they're feeling?
We did some kind of preliminary. They were trying to relocate the sign and all this stuff, and we briefly talked to them. Nothing in concrete about combining both of the projects, building a fence on there that can be used for both purposes, a sign and portion of the fence. But we haven't talked anything in, in concrete with the church. We haven't approached them or anything like that. We have talked inside here.
Is there a reason why we haven't?
No, I have, we haven't, we have been busy. We haven't, have a chance to do it.
How important is this? If we get a lightning strike or some such thing, is that part of it, or a lightning strike that knocks out a transformer, and then if we don't have this emergency?
We, we install a portable generator that we have here.
Okay, okay, okay. You okay?
Mm-hmm.
Pam, may we continue?
I believe that Mr. Senior.
I believe that Mr. Senior wanted to start with storm pond management site inspection, am I correct?
Yeah, four C, are we on Agenda four C?
Yes, we are in Pond four C. Can you give us a page number, please?
Twenty-seven. If you look at page twenty-seven, the first item is Lake One Hundred, Lake One Hundred and Twelve, right on the top there.
Uh-huh.
This, Ed Tinkle reported on this ten minutes ago. And Mr. Haskamp, who's in the audience, lives right next to this pond. I've been over there, Mr. Tinkle's been over there, and I agree with the comments that Ed made. This, this just is obvious to me, it just is not being maintained, regardless of what. I presume Molly is writing this report, Cal, is she?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Molly's talking about the water clarity being clear, and she's looking at it through Molly's eyes. She's not looking at it through the residents' eyes. And it is totally unkempt and not being maintained. And I, and I think it begs the question as to what, what kind of monitoring they were doing on Aquagenics here? How can we see, I'm talking about the overall process of finding out when Aquagenics made visits, to which ponds did they visit, what did they do on the visit, and what are their future planned visits going to do? I don't know where to get that information from.
This is, this is quite old, almost two months old.
What's two months old?
This report is dated July, July 8th.
It's still the same. I mean, I'm talking about us over there a week ago. And what I'm trying to say here is, I'm trying to make a larger statement than just looking at Lake One Hundred and Twelve and saying, what process can we develop? So that I can see when these ponds were visited and what were done by our contractor, and what planned, future planned visits are planned, and what are they planning to do when they get there? And I don't know where to find that information.
Well, within their contract, there is certain provisions as far as what the, they've agreed to do. And one of it, one of the requirements is a report. And I know L works with them pretty closely, and as does Molly, not as close as L does, but if, you know. I know that both of them have expressed concerns with the performance. Listening to some of the comments that Ed made earlier about charges and costs for what I would think of as being typical lake maintenance costs, and they should be all inclusive. It might be time to bid the contract out.
Well, it's okay bidding it out to someone else, but if we still don't have a process by which we can log what they've done and what they're going to do, we know further ahead.
Sure.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
May I make a comment? I live right close to one of those lakes, and I probably know more about what's going on, what has gone on than anybody around here. And I, in the last, probably year, maybe six months to a year, they've visited once. Because I've sat there, I'm retired, I don't have anything to do, I just watch what's going on in the world. And nothing is going on in those lakes. And I, these, these, these aren't that bad yet. I think we've pulled the wool over your eyes, so.
Thank you, George.
On page twenty-seven, the third item down is Lake One Hundred and Fourteen. We've had the residents from Cypress Point come present to us about their concerns with their pond. And I'm pleased that things are being done. It looks like on the top of Agenda page thirty, if you look at page thirty, the first paragraph refers to Lake One Hundred and Four. And the fact that the, the wetland there looks unkempt to the residents, at least some, at least Molly at this point is becoming resident-centric, and I like that. I mean, I can, I totally understand where Molly's coming from as a professional, but I'm also pleased to see that there's some concern now being applied to what the residents are looking at, as opposed to what Molly's looking at.
Okay.
And I like, and I like that.
Would you also mention this, please, sir?
Yes.
This is the infamous.
Please carry on.
This is the infamous Wetland Forty-Seven. And mentioned right in here, it says.
Can you help if?
Yeah, it's page thirty, guys.
Thirty?
Thirty, three zero, page three zero, where Rod was. And where it talks about Wetland Forty-Seven. And it seems to be, said, seems to, appears to be treated, being treated by someone other than Aquagenics, quote, golf course to be contacted. There still seems to be some interface, at least from these reports, Ed, that the golf course is getting involved in some of this stuff. And if that's not the case, we need to clarify that.
That is not the case, I could say a category that golf course is not doing as well.
Okay.
That's a guarantee, they're not, they're not doing any.
They've been told, they know.
Okay. I just have to say, they, they have, and they have been instructed not to.
Yeah, they know.
But I mean, they have on occasion, and it has been addressed.
It also mentions in one other place, just very briefly, I'm sorry, that there are grass clippings coming off from the golf course that are going into one of the ponds. Maybe a little bit closer attention.
I, I know. Ed Tinkle. Yeah, the, before the last meeting, before we came over here, I could hear the mowers running. I knew it wasn't my guy, and went out, and this was after we had that pretty good rain event. They were cutting the rough. And I talked to Charles, the superintendent afterwards, and you got to keep in mind some of these guys that we're dealing with over there. The King's English doesn't work real well. I've tried to tell him, you've got to make sure they understand, maybe the King's Spanish might work, but they don't understand, and they need to understand, that when you run that blow, or that mower, it has a discharge, and it's typically always to the right as you're going forward.
Correct.
They need to be going south.
The other direction.
The other direction, and blow it in. But the reason they don't like to do that is that wind rose it. Then it makes it the next time that you go to cut the other direction, you know, you're, you're cutting the clippings, is what you're doing.
Right.
Makes it difficult, but I told Charles, you're going to have to do that. And the other one, I would suggest, I know a lot of people don't like it, I don't even like to look at it. But that is to take and maybe have a buffer of twelve to eighteen inches, maybe even two feet, of where that grass grows up.
Rough type?
Well, it's not even rough. It's, we're beyond the rough, we're on the lake edge, well within the LME. But let that grow up a foot or so, so that that prevents, and if the guy does by chance make mistake, you've got that taller material to block that grass from blowing in. I know at the last meeting, we had a lady from Walden Run was complaining. It was in my territory. And what it was that she had seen was the clippings off the golf course, and the wind just blew them right straight across. But equally as bad, and I don't know what we do, I have no idea, busting my head on it, is this last two weeks, that grass along the lake, and I don't care what lake you're on in Gateway, it is horribly deep. And you go out there with a mower, and it's one of these ones, those guys ride like race cars. You can't get in there, they're just sink to the axles. But when they do try to get in there, they blow it right out into the lake. And I don't know what we do with these landscape people to tell them, but it's a common problem throughout Gateway. There, it's mow, blow, and go. That's what they do. And I don't know how we address them, but right now, if you go down, Rod, behind our house, my house, and on around the curve, there's probably four feet of clippings setting on the edge of the, of the lake. And it just goes wherever the wind's blowing it. But I talked to Charles after that last meeting, when that lady complainer called in or something and said something about it, but I sat there and I saw him, watching him do it across the lake. It's a problem, but it's not just golf course problem, it's our own landscape problem also.
Okay. Like, good.
Mr. Chairman, may I just take one minute of the board's time? I do want to respond to something you just remarked about, about the possibility of looking into the Aquagenics contract and going out for bids, and I didn't mean to close it down as quickly as I may have appeared to do. And it may be a decent thing to do. How long is the contract for, Tony?
Renewed for one more year, I believe.
And can we terminate without cause?
Uh, yes.
Thirty days.
Just make sure the right one.
While Tony's checking that.
We're talking lake maintenance?
Yeah, while Tony's checking that. My, my thought, Cal, is, is the problem here that we don't have the resources to manage this contractor? Or is it the contractor themselves that's the problem? You know, you manage a lot of CDDs. Is the problem just with the contractor to justify that comment, that we should be looking at a different one? Or is it us ourselves?
No, I, I think you've got the staff now to be able to manage that contract. I don't think that's an issue. I want to look more into the contract, but the comments Ed's made should be a typical performance expectation of that contractor, maintaining littoral shelves, that's part of the lake. And it shouldn't be an extra cost, they should be doing it now.
Agreed.
Eliminating and keeping some of the taller growing littorals where they're out of play. They block the line of play. They should be cut down. It's not that difficult for them to do it while they're in there supposedly maintaining the lakes. And if it's not included and specifically eliminated, then we tell them, this is the expectation. If you're going to increase the cost, then we're going to have to look at something else.
I don't, I don't want to imply.
Just one thing, just one thing. Don't you think it's time that's gotten you and Aquagenics, and maybe myself or another member, if they want to volunteer?
Just one of yous.
I understand. Have some conversation with Aquagenics?
Sure.
With them.
Pardon?
With them, I think she should be involved. With them, I think L should be involved.
Oh, oh, sure, yeah, oh, yeah. Anybody, anybody disagree that it's time that we?
I think it's timely.
Yeah.
I think it's.
I agree.
And for clarification, there is a termination clause, we have three days with or without cause, for any reason or no reason.
But before you have that conversation, you've got to ask yourself, who is around that might want to work with us and do it better? And I'm not going to go any further with that.
We don't want to jump from the frying pan into the fire.
Exactly right.
That's my concern.
Is anybody, anybody volunteering?
You are.
Right? I certainly am, but I don't want to take it away from you.
No, no, you got it.
Set that up, would you please, Cal?
Right, let's, let me summarize the contract first, so we know what they've technically or specifically identified.
Right, it doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Okay.
But get it on your, do it on your agenda.
It's on the radar.
Yeah, I want to clarify something here. The pond works group had a really good discussion at the last meeting with Brian here. And we specifically asked them about the services they provide. And if you all look at it, have the opportunity, look at their contract. It's a twenty-seven page contract, not counting signature pages, I believe. Read that, my one question was, that started stimulating some of this, was the fact, are we getting all we're paying for? That's issue one. But the bigger issue we brought up at the meeting, because of the fact that we had talked about littorals several times, it was explained to us that our agreement with Aquagenics, and I looked through it, and I didn't see it, and I'm taking them at their word for it, that we have never asked them, nor have we asked anybody on a proposal for pond management, littoral management. We've never asked for that, nor are we paying for it. So I asked at the meeting if Brian and Aquagenics would furnish us with a copy of what an amendment to our contract would look like, or a typical agreement with a community that does have a littoral requirement. Like Rod, when we went over to, never can forget the name of that place, Heritage Palm, got to write that down. Where they have that as a separate deal. And these contractors, these vendors, and Cal knows, he works with over there, they have that as a specific list of items and activities that they do, whether they've been instructed to maintain a littoral shelf to eight feet, ten feet, twenty feet, whatever the number is. Two foot high, six foot high, whatever the type of product. That's delineated out in their contract. So I had Brian send that to me, and he identified those things. And I even suggested that earlier, that maybe you go back, and I think the idea of sitting down with him was a good idea, but before he sat down with him, I would make sure that what's in our base contract, they're furnishing us. I, I got my doubts on some of it, but it needs to be checked. But I'm certainly not saying that, I'm not of the opinion that Aquagenics is not doing their job. I don't know, and I don't think I'm in a position to know that at this time. But I do know, they are not providing littorals because they haven't been asked. When they are asked to come in and do it, they do it as an extra. And I guess they are willing to do that. And they gave us a price, and this kind of staggered me. They told us that on littoral contracts, especially on new littorals, and this scared me because we heard it over at Heritage Palm, we've heard it from others, forty-five cents a lineal foot for littorial, littoral management.
No planting.
Planting, it's twenty-five management.
Twenty-five management, oh.
Yeah. Forty-five to plant, twenty-five to management.
See, now, that's even, that's even different, because Ernesto is telling me it's two dollars a square foot, planting.
If I can.
Two dollars a square foot.
Fifty cents.
But anyway, the point, the point is, is that I ask him for the, that information, because if that's not in our contract, and we're wanting to do littoral management, I think if you bring them in just to make sure, I think they're going to say, it's not in my contract, guys.
Could I ask, what is, what encompasses all of littoral management?
Maintenance.
What all, no, 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 no. What specific things fall under that dome of littoral management? Does it include plantings, does it include spraying, does it include? I'm asking.
Yes, I believe that's what you negotiate and tell them you want.
But it's spraying, it's either, or hand pulling.
Hand pulling.
You're going to take care of, or remove torpedo grass, vines, dog fennel, any of those plants that shouldn't be there, that are preventing your littoral plants to, from expanding and spreading.
All right, then let me ask, may I please ask, Cal, the second part of the question. At Colonial Country Club, for example, do they have a separate paragraph or part of their maintenance contract that specifically breaks out littorals as something?
No.
And then my next question is going to be, how many other things does Aquagenics have that are supposed to be extra items that we didn't know about?
All, all good questions, but no, there's not a specific price for, now, it could be included in the, there was an additional cost that's built into the base price, but the built, within the scope of services is, you know.
And it's described in there somewhere, Cal?
It's described in there that that's the expectation of the community, yes.
And so, we have no reference to littorals in our description?
It's what I'm being told by Aquagenics.
Yeah, well, from a clarification, from the standpoint of planting of littorals versus maintenance, there is a difference.
Yes.
The contract provides on as needed basis, we may request them to perform that, but it doesn't preclude us also from taking bids from other parties to do the littoral plantings.
Yeah, they've indicated to us at the meeting that they would be more than willing to come in and maintain littorals. Alls they have to do is be told to do it, and they do it as a basic change order.
Well, this is planting versus the maintenance.
On top, purely maintenance, Tony.
Okay, I think maintenance is already included, the way I look at, the way I read the agreement. Because the agreement says, the system, it says, a stormwater management system shall be treated a minimum on a monthly basis. And then the maintenance frequency, you know, regardless of duration, frequency, and type of chemical application, the maintenance, the system shall be maintained to permit conditions and an aesthetic and environmental standard acceptable to the district and third-party inspectors. That's in the contract, so I think that encompasses littorals, that's part of the surface water management system, in my opinion.
If it were me, and it was, I was Brian, I would say, well, where have you given me the instructions? Do you want the littorals cut back to eight feet, six feet, twelve feet, twenty feet? And there's a hell of a difference. Because these things grow.
Different.
I've heard enough, I have heard enough about this for tonight. We need to do some homework.
Yes, I agree. I just want to make sure that I was not back to pushing terminating Aquagenics.
You have made quite sure. Is there anything else that has to be said on this before we go ahead?
Just one sentence, and that is, I know that there's spraying done for like the dog fennel and some of the other invasive. So, to say that they haven't performed any, I think is unfair.
Okay. Well, and moreover, I think that we should clarify this, and I think that it's imperative that we clarify it by the next meeting.
We will try to clarify.
I'm certain with your dogma.
Well, if I may say one last thing myself about this, I did say at the end of the supervisor comments, the end of last meeting, I referred to section three point zero two in the Aquagenics contract, which sets out all of the performance things they're supposed to do. And I asked if we could look into that. And this, and this meeting you're going to have might segue into that. Examples being photographic evidence taken before and after treatment. Is the contractor notifying the district in writing of any bank erosion problems on a monthly basis? Is there a scoring system which appendix B is supposed to provide for? There's a whole host of other things in three oh two. My question is, are they being performed? And if not, is it the fault of the district for not making it happen, or is it the Aquagenics people? That's why I asked the question about three oh two two weeks ago. 302 two weeks ago.
Yes.
Guess what?
Yes, as far as I know, that's not being done. And that's all identified within the contract.
Okay. Well, it looks like we've got a number of issues to work on before the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have an answer by then.
True.
Good luck.
Yeah, exactly.
Go to bat.
We have great expectations.
There was a book by that name.
Charles Dickens.
Do you have more things that you want to bring to our attention?
4E.
4?
4E. Are we moving on to 4E now?
Yes, we are, if it's okay with everybody.
The dog park and all that stuff?
My only comment, and I think it's been said before, but looking at page 52.
Ah, yes.
I just don't know why we have small projects, which appear to be very small projects going back to May and before, still in process. Are they, is this just because the form hasn't been updated, or are they actually still in process?
Yes, this was July 31 report. He hasn't finished. He's done the inspection, but he hasn't, he just hasn't written up the-
Okay, so it just needs updating. It just seems odd to see these old dates for tiny projects.
I think maybe we aren't quite clear. Yes, this inspection was done 7/31 of 2015. We still have open-ended items from October of 2014, December of 2014, January of 2015, February, February, May, May, May.
You've made, you've made, you've made a good point. Let's hear what the management has to say about that.
What I don't know is, this is on 7/31, you're absolutely correct. There were a number of items that had gone past. With the change, the new maintenance superintendent, recreation superintendent, we expect these things to be, you know, addressed in a much more timely manner. Quite a few of these might be done now, but I don't have the updated report to be able to report on it.
Could we get one by next meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
And that's what would be helpful, is to have, to have old data for us in the books, like old meeting minutes, old committee meeting minutes, and old reports of inspections. It leaves a whole lot of open-ended what's been done since that time. Like what happened in August, that's, to me, is more important question here.
Yeah.
What of these things was completed in August?
Right. The, unfortunately, the gentleman that does this was in the hospital for a week. And so, you know, we just didn't, we put him behind.
This is a Severn Trent person?
Yes.
So with the places where there are blanks, what does that mean? Does that mean it hasn't been addressed at all?
That's right. You're talking about the last sheet, because-
Page 52?
Yes. The report was done on 7/31, so if you look at the report on where there's blanks, except for the two, there's two that, you know, he couldn't see that they were in process or completed, so he left them blank. But all of those from 7/31 down the bottom, eight maybe, that is, they hit the report that day. So he couldn't, he just added them to the report. But the one on 5/22 and the one on 5/1 replaced the valve cover, those he couldn't see that there was any evidence that anything had been done. He will be here next meeting. So, and I'll make sure he has the August one. I'm going to be on vacation.
I hate to suggest this, but instead of putting a report in our agenda and having us look at it a month after the date of the report, maybe it would be nice for the gentleman to bring us an updated report at the meeting. So we're looking at something that is as close to perfect as possible.
We can hand-deliver a report the day of the meeting or closer to the meeting. The problem is, he's got to have it to recording to be included in the packet.
Forget the packet for just a second.
Okay.
I hate to suggest it, but we've had this conversation so many times, and your report is a month plus after the date of this meeting, that we're just beating ourselves up about things that we shouldn't. I hope, that's what I'm, I hope that's what we're going to find out. And if we had a report that was done on Friday, or Monday, or Tuesday of this week, it would look a whole lot better.
Sure.
And would make us, make us feel better, make you look better.
I support your point. Can we avoid the paper, though? Can we have an email sent to us a few days before the meeting?
That would be fine.
I just don't want all that paper.
But we're still not handling the fact that an item that was reported as needing to be done on 10/15/2014 was reported as not done on 7/31/15.
Can I address them, please?
Please do.
Please, yes.
My own, my own business. I understand there's a lot of things that need to be done. And I take responsibility. But please also understand, I set priorities with what staff I have. Okay? The basketball goal, it was written up, it needed some painting. There was a box that you shoot at above the hoop. Part of the little green stripe was missing, and some of the white paint had faded off back in October 15, 2014. That wasn't high on my priority list. We have since purchased new backboards, because a year has gone by, or almost a year, and we need to replace them. I'm not arguing that fact. They're not in a severe mode of immediate repair, immediate addressing. I weigh these priorities. You hire me to weigh that and evaluate that. And I do that every day, every hour, to the best of my ability, and with the staff that I have. And we sub this stuff out to the electrician, to mainscape, and with what forces we have here and other people. And so again, we are going to, we are doing better now that we've hired a maintenance supervisor. We're paying more attention, we're getting things done. You'll see an improvement on here. But please understand the fact that I prioritize all the things, the phone calls, your calls, our staff calls, and I weigh that and I set those priorities. So I take responsibility.
And we appreciate that, and we pay you for that, and you're doing the right thing. But if you'd just put a little note on that line that says, not a, not a high priority, we'd know-
Maybe we can come up with a ranking system.
Well, I don't want to give you, make other work for you.
Justin writes these reports, I don't. But he does call, we revert, we review them together, and I tell him, well, you know what, Justin, you've written up stuff that is an HOA issue, it's not a CDD issue. I'm not trying to abandon the responsibility or anything else here. And, you know, it's been a long time, and we need to get it addressed. I'm not arguing that. And again, you know, I'm addressing the more critical issues that I feel are necessary.
Thank you. Can I help a little bit, folks?
Yeah, it does. Is it reasonable, from what you've just said, is it reasonable to expect, it's accountable from an accountability point of view, to say to this new facility supervisor, you're responsible for wiping all those off, anything older than three months, and do it? I mean, is that-
As a marching order.
Are you making them accountable for this? Is that-
Yes.
Great.
Now, are they supposed to be the one that turns the wrench, or are they going to be in a managerial position, supposed to be finding subcontractors for electricity and putting up, or do we need a handy person? Somebody that actually, like we have in Pelican Reserve, that has his golf cart and, or his alligator, his ladders and all that other stuff, and that's his task? Do we need that?
We have that.
We have one?
We have that. We've hired the right person to be hands-on.
Okay.
He has the tools, he has the equipment. And what he can't do, due to licensing requirements, be it electrical or mechanical, we sub out. Or if it's, you need heavy equipment, we sub out. You know, we get bids on. We try to get three bids on all these repairs and things. And same thing when we buy equipment and materials. I try to get three numbers and be responsible for the pennies. So, you know, thank you for listening.
Thanks for the explanation. Please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 4A through 4E.
That's a motion, is her second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, item five is the street signs bid. Got you going to help us on that one?
I'll be happy to. Let me just find it on my, geez, here, hold on. This is a carryover item from two weeks ago. You tabled it. And in between then and now, we, I have received confirmation, the question was, and I received confirmation from WCI, that they are going to match our specifications for these custom signs. And I have a little handout here of a, so what is, what is going to be, it's matching the existing one, it's going to be in the color, yes, sir. There you go.
I passed that out earlier, Scott.
Get one there, please.
Anyway, the same sign that we have, and it's going to be the hunter green, I guess is the correct name for the color. And again, WCI has hired Ajax paving to be the prime contractor on their road rehabilitation. And as of this week, as I was told last week, they're going to have a pre-construction meeting here shortly, within the next 10 days or less. And they did tell me they are going to replace all the signage to match ours. So I've given them all the specifications, and also I've given them all the information for the apparent low bidder here that we're recommending.
But they're using a different one even than either of these two. Didn't you just say Ajax?
That's the- Prime contractor. This is the sign manufacturer that I'm recommending.
Are they using this Arit or Arit or?
I don't know. I have given them all this information, the specs, contact information. They have been in contact with each other.
If I may, I talked to David Caldwell today, and they are using Arit for their signs.
Then they should be-
And he, they, WCI, somebody, will be contacting you to work out the schedule to begin the paving. The contract, I think, was signed yesterday, and-
Very good.
Authorization to proceed isn't been finished yet, but they'll be in contact with you as soon as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard the same thing from another source.
May I have a motion to approve the recommendation to enter into a contract with Reed Interestries for $26,834 for signs?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
They have a motion in the second. Any further conversation? Yes, sir.
Yes, please. Two questions. Scott, why have we only got two bids? Why couldn't we get more than two?
I did go out to a third party who's local, Tony Lichens, Sign Tech in Naples, who does a lot of the developers' work, and they were unresponsive.
Okay. And the other question is, we've got 34 signs, and if WCI owns two-thirds of the roads, then presumably they've got 68 signs.
It varies, yes.
So we're talking about 100 signs. Can we squeeze the vendor jointly with WCI and get a lower price?
This is a public bid. Our invitation, and we got bids.
I'm just asking the obvious question.
I don't know the procedure.
Did you discuss that with Dave, Bill?
I didn't. I could. I want Scott's opinion as to whether or not we ought to have some conversation.
There could be some economies of scale. I-
I would have thought so, for 100 signs.
Would like direction on how to approach that, maybe.
Yeah, Scott, I may need to chat if we're going to go back to both of these bidders, or just go back to the low bidder and suggest maybe, we're changing the scope and the specs there, if we're going to be ordering them all.
No, we are not ordering WCI signs.
Just trying to understand.
Yeah.
We can't do the negotiating for WCI. I think that's what-
It just seems we don't want to miss the opportunity to get some economies of scale, that's all. And if we can't, we can't. I just want to bring it up in case we can.
I don't know that, I don't know how we take it from here, but I know that with WCI getting these signs as well, I'm sure the service will be impeccable.
But 10% discount's 2,600 bucks. It's worth asking.
Is it, is it okay with you if we table this once again to the next meeting? In the meantime, I'll have another conversation, or you with David or somebody over WCI, and see if there's any, any, anything to be gained.
If you were getting, prove it where, the way it is, and we don't bring it back, Scott and I will look at getting a 10% reduction, explaining to them that, you know, Scott and the chairman have put some pressure on, and now WCI is going to also order the same signs, the same quantity, and I'm feeling it's a 10%.
Maybe a different quantity.
Right.
There's a-
So.
And one concern I do have is, there's a lead time on manufacturing these. And our roads, we've already finished segment two, we're going to be finished segment three before these signs are done. And that sign at Griffin and Gateway Boulevard is like a scarecrow. We've, we can put that up three times now. It's in very bad shape.
Well, what we can simply do is give Scott direction, although I hate to do it publicly, that, you know, we're, why don't we just, why don't you talk with Scott and David tomorrow?
I guess part of the discussion also is, how long are the bids good for?
I believe they're good for 90 days.
Okay.
Motion, motion to have the-
We've got a motion on the floor. Either we have to deal with it or amend it, one or the other.
I'd like to try to amend it, or let the amendment, let the motion or the or gives that he receives.
Would two weeks, if we tabled this till the next meeting, is it, would it really be that much of a-
Let me ask Cal a question.
Why don't we just give them, we know what we want to accomplish.
It, the two weeks appears like it's going to put a damper on the project. If you approved it at a not-to-exceed amount of this, then we will do everything we can to try and get aid.
And I'm comfortable with that approach.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Five zero. Thank you very much.
And that was a not-to-exceed rule.
Correct.
Okay. Staff reports, district council.
Nothing to report?
Say again?
Nothing to report.
All right. Mr. Engineer.
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have two items. The first is a task authorization. This is essentially a pass-through our contract to KCCS.
I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I'm having trouble hearing. Please help me out.
Sorry, this is a pass-through to KCCS for work they're doing associated with items that were added to PMI's contract. And that is primarily the striping work and the Griffin sidewalk. They're having to do additional inspection, and they had to do additional engineering associated with striping. So this is simply just cleaning up some extra work they've already been doing. We just need to get them more money so they can properly bill to that project. So that's what the first item is.
I have questions about that. May I proceed?
Please.
Danny, I have at home, and I haven't looked at it for a few weeks, the big, what I'm going to call the prints, the blueprints, if you will, page after page after page-
Yes, sir.
Of exactly what the paving and the width and, and that includes the striping, as I recall. And what I want to know is why we're paying extra for what I thought was included in the original contract.
The, well, it's, it's restriping of the north end of Gateway Boulevard. That was an additional item that wasn't part of what the original package was. So that's an additional design item.
So you're telling me that if I go home and I look at what I have, I- So you're telling me that if I go home and I look at what I have, I will find striping on those, on those sheets?
I don't know what you have, but, but there was an extra effort that they had to do to do design for the restriping of the north. So I don't know if what you have was after they did that work. The work's been done. We're just essentially asking to get them paid for the work that they have already, that they've already completed.
That was the part where the palm trees were relocated, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that wasn't, the striping wasn't in the bid.
And in fact, there's a lot of work that Paul isn't even asking for, that he has done, I know, you know, free of charge to this, to this district associated with these items, so that he could have asked for more. But that is essentially associated with that northern area and the palm tree. That's for the item one. Now, I believe that's the smaller of the two. The other is for work that was added that Tetra Tech did the design for, but it was added to the contract, and we needed the inspection. So it was for the irrigation main and for the new sidewalk walking path that was, that's being added out, out here along Griffin Drive.
Here's where you need to negotiate, Rod.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
Did he say something we were all supposed to hear?
No, he didn't. But I have a question when you finish.
I'd like to ask Margaret if she has something.
I have a question. Is it an additional twenty-five hundred and forty dollars they're asking for, or is it an additional twenty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars they're asking for?
There's two items. The, the design, which is associated with the restriping, that's the twenty-five forty.
Which was already approved.
Which was already, was already approved by, but it hasn't been incorporated into anything. So the twenty-five forty has already been approved by the board. That's the design we're talking about. The additional CEI, that item two, that's, that had nothing to do with Paul's time. That's his inspector out in the field doing the, doing the actual oversight of the work. So combined, those two are the twenty-four three eighty.
So let me ask, is this going to come up again as the work proceeds? Is there going to be more inspections and another twenty-five thousand dollars slapped in front of us?
Well, and, and no. And, and keep in mind that the original scope of services was all-inclusive for the work that was being done. This is additional construction work that was added in. So unless we add additional construction work in, i.e. if we want them to oversee the placement of the signs, which I'm not saying we do, I don't know why we would need to see them placed. So no, unless work is added, this is, this is all-inclusive. Work was all-inclusive before. We just added scope to the construction, which hence added more professional services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Danny?
Page sixty-five, page sixty-five, please. If you turn your neck ninety degrees.
How come these things keep getting slid in? In this ninety-degree rotation?
Page sixty-five talks about, and this is, I'm on, I'm on Margaret's wavelength on this. There, this original amount was thirty thousand and twenty bucks, right? Looking at the, looking at the table on page sixty-five. I just wanna understand what the original agreed amount was.
Okay, that's what I'm seeing. Original thirty thousand twenty dollars.
Thirty thousand, and we now are adding twenty-one, twenty-one eight forty CEI fee, plus a twenty-five forty design fee, which totals twenty-four three eighty on top of the thirty. The, the design fee is missing from page sixty-five.
Yes, it is. Twenty-five forty.
Yes, the, yeah, the sixty-five is just solely for the CEI work.
Oh, yeah, CE, okay. That's construction, engineering, and inspection.
Yes, and the other table, the other table, which I'm not sure if that's on sixty-four or sixty-six, but that other table is just the hours for the design.
All right. Let's focus on page sixty-five, 'cause that's the big number.
Okay.
So the original amount was thirty thousand and twenty. Now, it says here that was an estimate, or, or is that an amount that was actually signed and contracted?
It was signed in the contract as a not to exceed.
Okay.
So it was an estimate, but it was a not to exceed.
So it's more than an estimate, it's an agreed amount?
It was an agreed amount.
And, and again, I'm sorry if I'm repeating Margaret's question, but is it something, this extra twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty, is it something that we simply couldn't have foreseen at this time that we agreed this contract?
Correct.
'Cause I'm relying on your expertise here, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Yes, this was not, this was, this is new work. It was, could not have been foreseen. They had no idea, it did not even exist at the time that the previous contract was, was entered into agreement with them.
The previous contract being the contract that's being worked on right now?
Right. The, the fifty-one eight sixty, if we're looking at the page sixty-five, whatever page it is. So at the time that this project was developed, it was solely the road work and associated road work that KCCS was, was working on. The additional twenty-one eight forty is associated with items that Tetra Tech designed that was added well after that contract was given to KCCS. And that was for the irrigation main and for the pathway. That was then added by change order into the contractor's work. So KCCS could not have had any idea that this would have been foreseen.
Well, that, that letter explained it a lot better to me.
Okay.
Okay, so this, this twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty represents hours that you think are reasonable?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm relying on your.
Yes.
Advice here, because I, I have no way of telling whether this is reasonable or not.
I, I think it's more than reasonable, and if I were them, I would have asked for more.
And there's, and do you, in your opinion, there's no more, should we call this a change order or supplementally it amounts to the same thing, right?
Yeah, I would not call it a change order. The way we've presented it is as a, as its own authorization, and I would just stick to it that way.
And as far as you, you can see, there's gonna be no more extras after this one that you know about?
Citing any unforeseen conditions that pop up that I can't imagine what they would be, I, I can't imagine that there would be anything else.
Thanks.
What kind of, thank you. What, what kind of an action are you looking for by the board this afternoon?
Well, we, if, if, if you could make a motion to approve this, then we can officially enter into authorize KCCS so that they can officially bill for this work that's already ongoing.
Okay, but you said you didn't want it as a change order, you want it as.
Just as it's proposed in the, in the, in the, in the book, in the packet, as a task authorization.
Task authorization. May I have a motion for that approved?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Five zero. Thank you. That's one of two?
It's one of two. The second was chairman's request, actually, that we provide an update of the status of the existing lake banks, and then where we're going from here for the next, for the next round. So I'll just give you the, the Cliff Notes version. One oh six and one oh eight have been completed. One oh seven has been in its current condition probably for two to three weeks now. Essentially, if you'll, if you see there on one oh seven, we're waiting for the final restoration for the sod. And there's, there's really not much Brad or Extreme Divers can do right now. They're waiting on sod to be delivered. And I can attest, because I have ordered sod for my house over a month ago, and the sod fields are underwater. So as soon as that comes in, they'll be able to complete one oh seven, and we'll be able to do our inspections of one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight, and hopefully close it out. I have personally been out there two or three times over the last couple of weeks, and they, what, what is completed looks really, really good and is holding up well. That leads us to one oh four. One oh four, where Brad and Tyler met earlier this week looking at how we can best bypass one oh four without impacting the, the upstream lakes. And we have that method. Personally, I'm okay if that goes another couple of weeks, because then the rains are gonna slow down a little bit more, and we won't have that concern. Because one oh four is a large lake, accepts a lot of water in from one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, and I think of one or two other lakes. And then it goes downstream. So we do have the ability to bypass. They do have that plan, but personally, I, I don't wanna rush them. I would rather us not impact any of the residents. So that's where we are with the existing lakes. Any question on, on that?
Question for Danny, please?
If we haven't accepted.
Please go ahead.
If we haven't accepted, back to Ed's thing. If there is a situation where we have not accepted the ownership of these lakes, and it's not, and there's a couple of other developers that are out there, other than one that, that we all kinda focus on, can we then require them to use our current permit criteria, criteria before we accept ownership of those lakes? Or a lake?
For the record, I guess, again, one point to clarify, it's not an issue of accepting ownership, as I understand. It's an issue of accepting the operating permit transfer from South Florida Water Management District.
Right.
And it's a big difference.
Understand.
And that's how we have the ability to operate.
That's why I focused on ownership.
Right. And maybe, that's why we can operate it, because we do own or have the lakes as part of our system, accepted easements and or the improvements. And so it's, they are our lakes in many instances, where they are our lakes, either by easement or other instrument or interest in the real estate that we have.
Remember the quitclaim deed thingy?
Well, that was different. That's actually fee ownership, which is, again, you don't need to have fee ownership in order to own a lake or be the operator of a lake.
So is the permit criteria, a criteria applied to the permit, or is it applied to the acceptance of fee?
Well, I think we're putting a whole, three things together at one time. 'Cause we have the South Florida.
And I've done that before.
Yeah. We have the South Florida Water Management District Environmental Resource Permit, the ERP, that provides for construction of the certain stormwater management system. And it gets transferred, once it's completed, from the construction phase to the operating phase. And then you have an operating permit that's, the operating entity says, I'm accepting it as the operating entity. And all of the permits for all of Gateway, the district is listed on all of the instances, except for one or, for a few, as the operating, ultimate operating entity for the stormwater management system. The lakes are either dug by the district under a contract or dug by another entity, and the district supervises it and or accepts that conveyance. And, you know, once again, we're talking about older lakes here. And then that way, we have the easement, we have the lake, we just don't have that operating permit from South Florida Water Management District.
Going back to the permit criteria.
The permit criteria manual doesn't really come in one respect.
Well, part of the problem is that the, the permit is, the permit criteria, that was in place at the time that the permit was issued.
That's what I was hoping I wasn't gonna hear.
So, I mean, you know, there, there's obviously different course of actions you can take. One is to do nothing and continue to move forward with the program that you're doing. Another would be to, you know, get a meeting with the developers, send out letters again to the developers, see how they respond.
Do you kinda know who I'm talking about?
I, I, I know two or three. I mean, you know, and I, I think we could meet with all of them. As far as the, you know, the largest one, perhaps, you know, a meeting and suggestion of partnering in, in these costs might be, you know, might not be a bad idea.
Understand.
I don't, I don't know where you go with it, but, you know, it's, it's at least worth asking.
Okay, but we've gotta try. Okay.
Rod, did you, excuse me, are you finished?
I'm done.
Rod, did you have something?
I did. I'm, I'm looking at page sixty-eight and sixty-nine of the agenda, which is your total report, Danny.
Okay.
Okay, can I, I'd like to comment on, make a few comments on both those pages. Is that?
Please, go ahead.
The reason why we're doing lake bank restoration is principally firstly, for compliance reasons, for the South Florida Water Management slope.
Yes, sir.
Issues typically. Secondly, loss of property possibly by residents.
Yes, sir.
And thirdly, to improve water quality. And that's why we applied for the grant back in March.
Yes.
And Estero Bay Aquatic Preserve and all that.
Right.
So, so from a compliance perspective, again, we've had many discussions, Danny. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page as a board and as a district, that when you've done one oh four, one oh six, seven, and eight, the idea is to get the regulatory authorities out here, Lee County and South Florida Water Management particularly, and make sure that they're, they're in tune with what we're doing and they're happy with what we're doing. Is that the intention?
Yes, sir.
Great. You know, hard surface and all the, all those definitions.
Yeah, and if I can comment on that, you know, we, we possibly have some unresolved issues with Lee County, which we, we need to address in terms of what's required, what's not required for permitting. You know, we, we reported to you earlier in the year that, you know, by email, so we have a written document that says we're, you know, we're in the clear, of course, recent activities that took place in Lake One Twenty-Six. Open that door back up. Tony sent an email out that has yet to be responded to by, by Lee County. However, we now have one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight nearly in a completion stage, so we can certainly invite them out. We have had discussions with Lee County, and I haven't personally, Mr. Tinkle did. And that is, they're concerned with hardened surfaces above the control line.
Yeah.
And, and they're not considering Armor Max a hardened surface, obviously. So they have, from what I understand, they have no issue with what we're doing. However, the issue of whether or not a permit is actually required still remains the open, the open question.
Thank you. So it's a great idea to get them out here, I think, particularly when you finish one oh four, so we can show some flagships.
Could I, could I interrupt you just one second? Do you have any estimate of when one oh four might be finished?
They're mobilizing.
I.
Forget it. If you can't.
No.
Okay.
I would like this, it's, it's all contingent upon when they truly start. They're mobilizing, but how fast are they gonna be able to pump it down? It's, it's too hard to say. I would say, you know, forty-five to sixty days. But if, if you're tying that into Rod's comments, I personally don't think we need to wait for one oh four to be completed to invite regulatory officials out. We can certainly walk one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight very easily and demonstrate exactly what we're, what we're doing.
Okay, I'm, thank you. Please, please continue.
Second reason for doing this is loss of property from, possible loss of property from residents or commercial residents. Is, we've talked about this, and I just wanna get it, make sure we get this straight. Before we, before we restore lake banks, would it be a good idea to somehow verify where the property lines are so we're restoring back to the proper line?
Yes, and it probably wasn't as, as clear in the memo, I was trying to keep it applying to the KISS principle of keeping it simple. Moving forward, as, as I've mentioned, we want, we want full surveys of, of the lake banks of where work needs to be done. That way, we can properly design and quantify what needs to be done. In fact, we've already asked a local surveyor, community engineering, who's done several surveys. Community engineering, Mark McLeary, to provide us a quote to do surveying of banks in Pelican Preserve. And we'll be asking them for.
Can I stop you there for a second?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, you remember the agreement with Johnson Engineering?
Yes.
Might this not be an appropriate job for them?
To ask them, yes.
I'm not privy.
Well, let's put it this way. It's, it's very possible the Johnson Engineering might be able to do the job, the need, the surveying job that needs to be done, a lot cheaper to this board than anyone else. And how about you and I and the attorney having some conversation about that after the meeting?
That would be great, 'cause it's time sensitive, so that would be great if we can do that. But getting back to, to Rod's comment, where I was going with that was. data that we want to see is cross-sectional data as well as where the easement lines and property lines are. From that, we can tell where the, the lakes truly lie at this point. And I've, you know, I've said to this board many times, I have, I have no confidence on that these were ever built in the proper space to begin with. And that may open up a completely, you know, different.
I understand.
Different issues, but assuming that they were constructed in the proper location, we can at least see, are we encroaching or are we not?
What I'm trying to say here, I, I don't want to open up another can of worms where we're starting to overlay more costs and more costs in going forward for every single property that we restore the bank on. I'm just wanting to make sure we have some kind of an audit trail. If, let's say you're doing one oh four and there's twenty houses involved in a line, for example. Is there a way in which we can sort of make an effort to find out where the, where the bank should be restored to short of doing individual surveys for every property?
Yeah.
So at least if a resident comes up to us and said, look, we, we can say we made an effort to restore it to a point and we have, we have a log of that.
Yes, the data that we will ask will include cross-sectional data every fifty feet unless there are erosion issues within that that we need to collect more frequently. We'll collect, we'll, we'll establish the easement line and the property lines. And the cross-sectional data that we'll get, it will be given to us in two ways. One will be given to us actually in a cross, a true cross section. The other will give, give it to us in a plan view. And from that plan view, we can literally see where, well, and in the cross section, we can see where the property lines are and where that top of bank is and if we're encroaching. Tie that back into the original design, we can see where that top of bank truly was. Was it at the easement line or was it at the property line? So, well, those are essentially the same, but was it, meaning was it at the interior easement line? So we can look at those issues and, and move forward and make that decision.
Okay, the, the third reason for doing the lake bank erosion is to improve water quality. And that's the reason we applied for the grant, six hundred thousand dollar grant back in March. Because it would be perceived to improve water quality flowing down through to Six Mile and Mollet Creek and Estero Bay.
Yes.
With that in mind, and the fact that we're applying for an SRF loan and this is dedicated to lake bank restoration, the way we've agreed it with you up to now, okay? So presumably in the next several months, you'll be putting together some kind of a detailed facilities plan as to exactly how we would spend that loan money. And all we had going, if we wind the clock back to when we were originally talking about this loan, it was based upon the original Morris Riley reports.
Right.
Of forty-nine ponds in Greater Gateway.
Yes.
Is the intention to revise this priority list and get some more up to date? Because I'm not sure that Morris Riley is all we can depend on.
No, I think at this point, we're, we're recognizing that there's good information there, but I'm going to say all but throw it out. And we, we know that, you know, we have a list of lakes we talked about at the last meeting that are prioritized for this next year. Those may still be the same. We need to make that determination very quickly.
Yeah.
But the facilities plan, let me, let me be clear with that too, because I don't, we won't, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot and say, these are the lakes and these are the order.
Right.
What the facilities plan needs to do is to recognize that you have this program and you're going to justify that five million dollars. So it's not going to be a step-by-step plan that we're going to do this lake this year and this lake and this lake and this lake. It's going to say, these are the lakes. Or maybe, we may even want to make it generic and just say, you're going to do lake bank restoration. So that may be a discussion we want to have at a, at a later date. But yes, the goal will be in the very near future to start reprioritizing these lakes by physical inspections, not just, not just using the Morris Riley reports and L's documents.
Thank you.
Gary, anybody, Margaret had something, please.
I'm, the part of the report that I wanted to discuss is the moving forward.
Okay.
The bullet point three on page sixty-nine talks about prequalification of contractors and if that's what you're suggesting we do. I really would hope that we really do this, that we get these contractors prequalified so that when all of the pieces of this puzzle come into place and we've got dry season once again upon us, that we take full advantage of the entire dry season this year. That would be such a wonderful novelty.
I think.
Well put.
And, and if, you know, if that's board's direction, we can certainly start that process immediately. Now, there, there are a couple of ways we can, we can go about this. And I think either any way you go about it, I think you're going to see, you're going to see competitive pricing, which is something that we've, I, I think we've lacked here on a lot of things, not just with, you know, lake banks, but we've lacked on getting competitive pricing. But the, so the prequalification, I think what I mentioned in here is a couple of ways, you know, we can actually put a prequalification package together and solicit for contractors to submit on that. And we can actually say, yes, you're prequalified. When we do lake bank work in the future, you and only you will be allowed to bid on that because you've been prequalified and we, we agree you're prequalified. The other way of doing that is, is through the actual manufacturer. I don't think the manufacturer is at a point where they're ready to do that. It is something they want to, you know, do in the, in the future. But I think we can certainly put a package together. We can advertise that package. We can work with the manufacturer on vendors that they use. We can also, you know, work with other local communities on vendors they have used. And we can make sure that they all have the package and have that opportunity to, to prequalify.
I'd like to see us start getting started on that process so that we're ready. I know this is going to take some time to get somebody prequalified, the way you're talking about. I think the sooner we get started on heading down that road, the better off we are.
I, if that's board's direction, I don't know that we need a motion, but we can certainly start working on that.
Is there anyone on the board who's opposed to prequalification of?
I'm totally in support of it.
Thank you.
Please consider that your marching orders.
Got it.
Mr. Ed, did you have something?
Yeah, yeah, one thing that we ran into on this, and I don't think Danny went into detail, but it's playing on survey. We need to have vertical control at all of these lakes. Like a staff gauge or something to determine where the, what do you call it?
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll go, I'll, I'll take it from there. We, uh. Well, I'm standing at the podium. It's not a report. That is, that is one of the most important and lacking things that we have had. And, and we saw it on, on basically all of the ponds that we've worked on. We've had to add change order because we felt the material needed to extend further. We had no way of, of really knowing. And at this point, we still have no way of, of knowing truly how far into the lake we need to extend this. Staff gauges will, you know, will help us, tell us where, moving forward in the future, where the actual low water level is. And with the surveying, one thing is to get the actual control elevation verified. And they would, of course, with that too, so they'll, we want them to verify what that control is. We want them to give us the water elevation at the date that they survey. And then we would certainly like to see staff gauges put in each lake ideally, but definitely as we move forward into each lake that we know we're going to be doing. It doesn't do us any good to put a staff gauge in, in any of the lakes, you know, right now. I mean, it, it would have been better to have them in this time last year. But we're going to be moving forward with the next round and we're still going to be estimating. But if, if we put staff gauges in the lakes we're going to be doing in the next couple of years, then we'll have actually good data and if that data is recorded, then we'll actually know what that low water level is, so.
We love it.
Gary, you okay?
So, so we've done, we did six bathymetrics.
Yes.
Jeff Key did six. And the basis upon which we agreed six was because we wanted to make sure the data was going to be useful before we allowed him to rip on the rest of them. And I, and I wanted to just update myself on, at what, is the data that we've got useful and should we be making a decision to go forward?
Well, actually, I think we're going to be presenting at the next, at the next board meeting, which will be very good.
Two weeks' time.
Two weeks' time, but, but the data is very, is, is very good, very helpful.
Well, I just want to know why it's helpful, so we can defer that to.
Well, yeah, we, we can defer that in a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny, very much. District manager?
Only thing I had, reminder, I won't be at the next meeting. Justin Faircloth will be sitting in my.
Okay. Pam, do you have anything for us?
Uh, no.
Margaret?
I had one. Let me scroll it back to my page and see if it's still relevant. Ah, yes. I had mentioned once before under supervisor comments, the fact that the, on the meter replacement program, that the center flip-ups needed to be secured and they still need to be secured.
Yes, I know. I was telling Bill before the meeting, we scheduled a meeting this week and that's one of the issues that we have in the agenda. Unfortunately, we had to cancel the meeting because there was an emergency in the, the, the project manager for forty line. There is only one guy. He's the manager of the forty line. And he had to cancel the meeting and he hasn't rescheduled the meeting yet. But that's one of the items that we have that we are kind of rather upset about, what is throughout the community. According to our records, there were only a few missing. Now there is a lot of them missing. Where they are, somebody disappeared them. And we are kind of debating that with them.
Rod, do you have anything for us?
Yes, thank you. Item seven A. Are we on seven A yet?
Yes, we, we, no, well, yes, we are.
Okay, seven A.
Yes, sir.
I'll hand this out. This is an updated, this is an updated version of what's in the meeting book. We've talked about this before and this is, the idea is to try and, try and gather email addresses from our residents as opposed to going through property management companies who manage HOAs, which is rather a cumbersome way of communicating. And it would also, if we were able to achieve this, it would also assist our staff in that, for example, Melissa has advised me that we only, out of the six thousand ERUs we have, almost six hun, we only have six hundred email addresses mainly, that's ten percent of our, of our community, we have email addresses.
That's just, that's just as a community that has water.
That's, that's the community, that's the utilities community, yes, outside Pelican. And it would help enormously if we, not just from the standpoint of communicating with, with our customers from water, from our water to get to the website to get there to pay their water bill, but also for us to be able to establish a digital communication on newsletters, breaking news, emergency messages, a hurricane alert, water, and instant response surveys. I think we need, as we go forward, when we start addressing some important issues, it's always nice to be able to bounce ideas off of the resident group. Even if we only have twenty-five percent of the community, which would be fifteen hundred, that's a statistically valid sample to be able to do instant response survey monkeys. So for all those reasons, I think we're in a digital age. It doesn't make sense to be communicating by paper and by regular mail. And I think that we could benefit by sending out a request or an email like this letter that I've written for, on behalf of Scott. Tony's, Tony's sent me this disclaimer or whatever you call it at the bottom.
Warning, I think.
A warning that it's a public record, which you've all, you're all aware of. And as long as we make that clear, the idea of this is to send it out on the September the fifteenth water bill and see how many we get back. And we're asking them to email customercare@gatewaydistrict.org. And I'm wondering what my colleagues would think about this, whether you'd support this idea.
I, I prefer this warning as, for lack of a better word, because when I read the first one, I went, that's not strong enough. And I, and I even think I'd like for this to be bolded and, and a little bit stronger of a warning that, you know, if you want to keep your email private, your email address private, do not send it to this public entity. I think it needs to be really clear because the last time that we had more than six hundred email addresses and the public records request was asked by more than one entity, people were up in arms that their email addresses were given out because they didn't understand that that was anybody. Anybody can request that email address.
They can't, we've got six hundreds now that they could, anybody could request, right?
That's, that's correct, but if, you know, if, if you're going out and soliciting more people to.
Make it clear. Maybe, maybe put it in red.
I think it needs to be really clear that, you know, this, your email address will no longer be private.
I, I'd like to point out that the Gateway website has on it a statement, if not identical, very similar to this warning at the bottom.
And that's from, that, that warning, that statement on the website is verbatim from the statute. It talks about what you have to put on a website as far as the disclosure. And that's basically trying to paraphrase, repeat what was in the statute.
So this, this as it stands, Tony, this, this, this piece of paper just distributed, that complies with the public records law?
Well, it complies with a statute that says, you know, what has to be on a website, on a public, on a public website.
So if we were to make that in bold or put it in red, do you think, is there anything more we could be doing to make it clear to the community that this is a public record?
I think bold is a good idea. That way it really jumps out.
Mike?
I, I think I'd still like a statement to the effect that once you provide the CDD your email address, it will no longer be private. That, that's, I want it to be just as clear as possible that if you're giving the CDD your email address, do not consider it a private email address any longer.
You, are you, are you suggesting a specific wording different from this warning?
Or in addition to it? Once you provide the CDD your email address, you should no longer consider it a private email address. Because anybody can get it.
Yeah, we have, it does say it's a public record and you can, and now you can, you no longer consider it a private, it is no longer private. I mean.
There's a lot of people who don't know what.
Yeah, they don't understand what that means. Right, that was my concern.
Okay, I understand.
Gary, your unusual request.
I've heard all the negatives regarding it and if I felt that negative about it and if I wanted to, it sounded like we ought to put it in a font size of about fifty. I would, as much as I, I, I understand the reason for it, the more I understand the reason not to even ask for it. Because I would never want to look at the person, I would not want to be in the lady's position when somebody comes storming through the door saying, why did someone give out my email address, et cetera? And these poor ladies are going to be the one that are going to get harassed.
I agree.
Rod, would it be okay with you if we, if I asked Margaret to.
Give her a dress.
Change the wording here to satisfy her.
Absolutely.
And we talk about it again in two weeks because I'm frankly, I've, 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 I've got mixed emotions about it. I'd like to someday think that we'd be able to send our water bills out electronically instead of by U.S. mail.
You and Target, huh?
Tony, is there any way at all to exclude these from public records requests?
No, in my opinion, no.
That's, that's the whole issue that I have.
Will you, would you, would you work on what you think is the satisfactory disclaimer of the warning?
I will. I'll get with Scott.
And maybe if we put down the word subscriber and then put in there. Okay, so if you'd like to, to be included in digital communications, please subscribe to customer care. And then you can put another disclaimer in there. Please note that if you are a subscriber, your email will be subject to, you know, to what, you know.
Wait a minute.
I'll get with Scott and I'll work.
Wait a minute. Are we saying that our water business is a public business? Or are we saying that the district of itself is the entity that's public?
Or are we saying that the district of itself is the entity that's public? Therefore, if a person responds to us through our business, does that business have to publish all of the data publicly? Or does the district have to publish those things that are public works?
You're giving, you're giving Tony a flame.
No, 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 we don't have to publish, you know, once, if, if anything we see.
Well, I mean.
That's why I was doing the.
If a request comes in regarding something to do with 400, don't we have the ability to maintain certain business privacies with some of the data? With our water, sewer, and irrigation? Certainly.
The public records law, there are a number of exemptions under Florida law, where certain documents are deemed exempt and or confidential, or certain contents may be redacted as being exempt or confidential. An example is the utility plans. That's specifically outlined in the statute, the utility plans for utilities. To my knowledge, there's no such exemption that can be claimed as to the district's utility bills that go out to its customers.
But the utility business you're talking about has, in relation to homeland security.
That's correct, that's, that's the purpose of that was that plans, you know, plans involving a utility system or security systems for a governmental entity are public records, but they're exempt and confidential from disclosure to the public as a whole. The district's records generally as to its accounts dealing with utility bills, I'm not aware of any exemption.
Therefore, we have to ask everybody who's one of our customers to become part of our, um, homeland security plan within our 400. Can we create, can we create, bear with me now, can we create a club for our, our people, our, our customers, our clients, our clientele, that gives them a certain exclusivity that therefore they can be included under that umbrella that we have with our public utility?
In my, in my opinion, no.
I, I also, Gary, on that wavelength, I asked the question, um, whether Seven Trent could keep all these email addresses, rather like Alliance would keep them for an HOA as a, as a management. But Tony says, no, we, that's, you're still our custodian. So, I, I'm okay if you wanna add some more sentences to this. I just, I just feel that we're gonna get out of paper, and we're gonna be able to get into the digital age, and we should try.
I, I, I just think, as Gary said, we're treading on a, people really have a problem with other people being able to access their information through a third party. So, I don't know if that's something that we want to, to do.
I can see all kinds of, and there were problems in the past, and I don't, I won't, I wanna avoid that, I really do.
If, but I can see, but I can see that we still owe it to the people to better direct them towards our website. I'm still of the opinion that so very, very, very few do go to that site disappointingly, but that's our fault, not communicating it, not marketing it, not, not letting people know all of the things that they can achieve or receive at that website. So that mailer could still enforce, reinforce that, and that would be a great step to start getting it. Additionally, mentioning the, the fact that this is public media, that they can actually, as a step, 'cause there's an, the other side of that mailer that I wanna also, something that's not as important as what Rod's doing, but I think that, that we can do beneficially.
Rod, do you have other things for us?
No, uh, other than, I mean, we'll, we'll put this on, we'll just defer this thing.
Margaret's gonna work on that for us, and we're gonna talk about it.
Okay, I just wanna keep the discussion going on that, 'cause I think it's timely.
Gary, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, two thi, uh, two things. I think three meetings ago, Rod brought up a, a, a thing and suggested, and I haven't heard any response back to it. Regarding the, you know, we've got a, we're looking at an expenditure of over half a million bucks for the lighting of the soccer complex. And Rod's suggestion was that staff discuss with the two leagues that provide us $23,000 a year income to offset that more than half a million expenditure, to find out how they would feel regarding not having the lighting. Knowing also, by the way, that there's an amortization of the fact that these lights aren't gonna fail tomorrow, that we still have, let's say, a five-year phase out before, even if they completely went bust, that they'd still have usable lighting. Has that communication that Rod suggested and we all agreed upon?
Yes.
Has there been those meetings, and if so, share with us what's going on? Communication was sent, there's not been any communication back.
Let's see if we can turn the burner off.
I'm sorry, hold on.
We'll, we'll see if we can get an answer for our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
You had a second?
Yeah. Um, something happened, a, a, a communication this week from one of the residents, and not to go into all of that details, because they haven't indicated that they want it, this is a public venue, et cetera. But one of the things that we also have is all of these folk, a, a number of folk, that are part-time residents, snowbirds, and they're gonna come back, and they are going to have, uh, water heater systems that are gonna have sediment in them. And I know that we couldn't change ours over, and we've got an instant hot water system, which is fabulous, but also very much so in the warranty is the fact that every year we have to have it flushed and recorded, and keep that if our warranty is to be active. I'd be willing to bet you that, I don't know, picking up 10% of the people, 1% of the people ever actually flush their tanks? And if they don't, all of this stuff is going through the system. All of our, Yvonne and I had a, a discussion, all of our, the water that we receive from Lee County all meets DEP requirements and that type of thing. But we as a, we're a business, and we have to start treating people like we're a business and like they're a valued customer. And the more we treat them like they're a valued customer, the more they're gonna want to get on our website, see the stuff that we're putting out, et cetera. So I would suggest that we should put something in this water bill that reminds them that annually they should flush their hot water heater, that it's prudent, it's important, et cetera, et cetera, and we value you, and that's why we wanna remind you about this.
That's great.
I think that's a great idea.
Can you get, can you get that, uh, in for, uh, God, or God, or somebody? If we had more suggestions like that, that, that'll, that'll start making us more valuable.
And can we add that as a little permanent blip onto the website too?
Sure.
You know?
That'd be good. Are you finished, Gary?
I'm done.
Oh, Rod, coming back.
A supervisory comment, uh, one comment to the end here. Last meeting, I, um, I asked to, you to consider the $650,000 that's sitting in current liabilities. These are prepaid security deposits for our, for customers on our utility. Um, what I've been able to ascertain since the last meeting is that 90% of our bills are paid on time, according to Melissa. So we have 90% of our community pays as good as a payment record. FPL and Lee County, their policy, well, FPL have a policy where you put a, a deposit down of two months, and if you're a good payer for 23 months, you get it back after, in the 24th month. Lee County has a similar policy, except they're even, it's even, uh, more customer oriented in that if you can provide evidence that, from other utilities, that you're, you've got a good payment history, they will waive the security deposit altogether. However, if they charge you a security deposit, you will get it back in the 24th month. And they only require 12 months of good payment history. It appears with us that we have somewhat of a dinosaur of a policy that I think we need to review. And I think that with 90% of our customers paying on time, and, and customers, for example, like me, who have been, uh, paying on time for 15, 17 years, I think, I think those customers should get their deposit back. And I, and I, I'm not sure, uh, the, whether the time is right to make this motion, or whether you and Stephen would like to give some thought to how, what the, what the impact of that would be, other than to reduce our current liability and give residents their money back. Then, then an analysis of what remains, meaning the customers who are not paying on time, let's say, let's say half a million goes back out, then we have 150 that we need to analyze and say, who does that belong to? Does it belong to the people who are not paying on time, or old customers who simply haven't refunded it to? And what do we do with the remains? Presumably, it goes to the state. I think we should clean it up. I think this policy's been wrong for a long time.
Um, I'd like to jump in here for a minute, if I can. I asked Melissa to send you all on your email the rule regarding these deposits. Um, I, I, I don't know that she did. I got one, I got one from her, and then I asked her to send them to all the rest of you. I don't know that that's, that happened yet. But before we even have an intelligent discussion about your suggestion, I think that we all ought to know what the rule says and understand that if we're gonna change a rule, it has to be advertised, and we have to have a public hearing, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. So, uh, having said that, before we discuss this any further, let's all acquaint ourselves with the rule as it is right now. If you wanted to talk about it in two weeks, that'd be fine. And Scott will make sure that Melissa, um, get it back in that.
So it's an agenda item, has it been agreed as an agenda item?
Anything else?
Is this agreed to be?
Up to you.
Is this agreed to be an agenda item for next meeting?
Sure. We'll have it as an agenda item.
Right, and the, the question or the decision at the next meeting would be if it's something you wanna proceed, like the chairman said, you need to go through rulemaking. So you'll set a public hearing for that. The, Stephen and I did talk about it a little bit, there, you know, it doesn't really impact your operating funds at all, 'cause it's set aside as a security deposit fund, it doesn't collect interest, it just sits there. The, if the board doesn't feel that they want that security for non-payments, and that that's all it really is, then it can be eliminated.
Yeah, one thing we need to understand, though, we have, while you said we eliminate a liability, that's only half of it. We eliminate the cash also, so it's a wash as far as.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned about the residents than I am this, I mean, FPL gives 2% interest, Lee County gives zero interest, we give zero interest, okay?
But we don't make interest.
No, no, I understood, I'm, it's, it's more a principle and, and, it's the policy rather than the cash and the interest. And I'm saying, uh, for people in good standing for, for over two years, I think there's a case to refund it. It just doesn't seem right to me.
Let's discuss it after we.
Yeah, 'cause I would like to hear what would be the impact and how would that go?
Well, let's, let's get educated first. Let's get educated first, let's find out what's going on.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that the agenda item be one of discussion concerning changing rule regarding deposits and possible direction to initiate rulemaking, you know, so we can have that. Because there's a two-step process for the rulemaking, we have to issue an advertisement of notice of intent to engage in rulemaking, and after we do that, we have to do a notice of opposed rule.
I, I don't think, I don't, I think you're going to, I think you're going ahead of us.
Okay.
But I think we're gonna have an agenda item as well suggested, period.
Period.
Thank you.
So, anything else for the order? I thank you all for your hard work, and we are adjourned.
Thank you. Pam, Pam.